Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our city council meeting for Monday, August the 5th. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each council member, participant, to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Mobley, City Council at Large.
John Jennings, District 4.
Dave Harrison, District 5.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Anthony Davidson, District 3.
Ed Bell, District 2.
Mary Hughes Stewart, District 1.
Council, Post Council at Large.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council members, you've been presented minutes from the July 1st meeting. This time, the floor is open for comments, questions, or corrections.
I just have a comment. My name is spelled A-.
Okay. I will fix that, Kathy. Any other questions, comments, or corrections?
I have read and understand the Beech Grove City Council meetings for Monday, July 1st, and I motion we accept as written with Kathy's name corrected.
Need a second, please?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Move on to petitions or comments by citizens. Two people have signed up to speak this evening. First person is John Morgan. John, you have three minutes.
Thank you. John Morgan, 1415 Main Street. Here in regards to the promoters, we would like to get a little clarification on the parking ordinance for when the Fall Festival trucks and things like that come in. Will they be able to park on the side streets? Do we have to get them out of town? We just want to make sure we're in compliance with anything the council wishes.
The counselor at the last meeting asked for an amendment to that ordinance, which it's on for third reading tonight, which will allow that to happen.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, John.
The only other person signed up to speak is Joe Griffin. Joe, you have three minutes.
Well, I was going to talk on Resolution Number 9. Do you want me to wait for that or do it now?
Sure.
I'll wait for Resolution Number 9. Thanks.
Okay. Move on to reports, boards, and commissions. The Greenscape Committee, Tim Latimer sent me an email this evening. He had surgery this afternoon, is not available. RDC, Joe.
It's me again, Joe Griffin. Here to give the RDC report. I called an executive meeting, and our topic was about the Rockpile. We discussed many options. There were no decisions made, no votes taken, anything of that nature. We had a meeting right after that in which we were cleaning up some business to take care of, in which we needed to get a few things done. There was a bill that we had to pass and a couple things to get straightened out that we had just found out about. Then, at our regular RDC meeting, Kathy and Ron are going to be working to gather some information on a bill that was made known to Dan and myself. Dan and myself went down and talked to a few of my contacts down there, and they brought to light, one of them brought to light, a bill in which really might help the RDC do some things. It basically states that you can take over property that is in repossession, bankruptcy, whatever else after so long. And it might give the RDC a chance to start putting some money into the city without having to do a whole TIF and just stripping the heck out of everything, you know? Just another option, they're gathering information on that. And also, Donald and myself are gathering information on Digital City and the landfill to see what options are what. So, we're all working on that to see what was going on. We also had a guest speaker. The guest speaker was from the open door law. And I got to apologize to him. I messed up his presentation. I found out what the problem was. I had a smart power strip, so he had to have things all set up right. So, I messed up his presentation. It is out on the website. And he got out of here about nine o'clock, a little after nine, by the time he got done. It was about the open door law policy and the things that go on with the open door. And it was a, I really felt like it was a pretty productive meeting and stuff. Also, at this time, I'd like to address some questions and concerns about the RDC. On the closed-door meeting, cost, the city money, no projects being done, abolishing the RDC, and dictatorship. So, if I can, I'll carry on. You know, after the, you know, during the hearing, there was some stuff brought up about the enclosed door and how the things were set up and carried out. There was question about the posting. Well, the posting was done correctly because I had the open door law policy person on the line when I was writing it. On the web, it was correct. It was my fault that it wasn't followed 100% back up. We semi-sort, I semi-sort, I had it correct, stating that there was a meeting. I should have followed it a little farther, so that's my fault. So, you know, you're talking about it, and we got discussing it there. I ask, the reason I brought it to an executive meeting was that according to the 14 points that you can bring out in an executive meeting on, was to gather information about buildings and stuff. And I asked before the beginning of the meeting if there was going to be anything new. Nothing came up about there being anything new since it was the same group putting it together. So, I made it an open executive meeting, which meant that people could come in and sit down and listen, and they couldn't do any more than that. So, you know, closed door, since, since Mr. Mayor, since you didn't make it there, Ed Bell made it for a little bit. I didn't see Dave there. Since you guys didn't make it there, what that does is, is we have to file minutes for that meeting. I did tape it, and I'll eventually get the audio up on the website. And the reason I wanted an executive meeting is because everything up to this point was said that, you know, you could only take so many to a meeting. You couldn't have a quorum. At this meeting, we had all the commissioners. We also had the mayor. We had President Protam. We had councilman at large. We have another councilman. Had the clerk treasurer. We had the NPR group person. We had Brownfield person. And we had Hall &amp; Associates person there. So, we had everybody gathered at one for one input, instead of the privileged few that we thought that we only could have in the past, of what we were led to believe. So, I called that meeting an executive meeting so I could get everybody there, hoping that we could get input from everybody, instead of just the privileged few, as it appears to have happened in the past. You know, and I took heat for that. And let me read a statement. "The past seven years have been an era of darkness for the city. In no way was fact more apparent than administration's lack of transparency. Local government that is working for the citizens has no need to be anything but open and honest. There should be nothing to hide. If decisions are being made that represent the spirit of the people's interest, then there is no need to avoid public scrutiny. Policy or law that is developed behind closed doors is nothing more than special interests and personal agendas, with little considerations for the greater good." And it also goes on to say, "When elected mayor, I will reinstate live television coverage of all council meetings." You know, Ed, you were on the, on the committee, you were on the, you were on the council when that famous committee came up that did away with dispatch. In the meantime, we've had three committees formed: Stormwater, the Sewer Board, and Building Permits. Two of them have led to law. And since you guys didn't make it to the open door law, here is the open door law policy on that. Open door law policy states, what about committees? "A committee must comply with the open door law if the committee has been appointed directly by a governing body or its presiding officer to take official action in business." So, in other words, they have to operate the exact same way that any other commission or bond would have to be, just as the council, just as the RDC, or anybody else. We have never seen any minutes. We have never seen, we don't even know who was on it. We've never seen anything like that, just a privileged few, you know? Let's talk about ownership of projects. The council passed resolutions back in 2008. Resolution Number 3, Resolution Number 8, 8A, all signed by President Protam, Ed Bell. RDC passed resolutions, 2008, Number 11-13-1, Number 3, 2008, Number 2, 2008, which gave the RDC commissioners Main Street right-of-way, landfill, Greenway area, St. Francis area. These policies right here. Let's talk about St. Francis real quick. St. Francis, from the RDC minutes of October 18th, 2012. Joe Griffin asked what was going on with St. Francis, and Stephanie deferred to Mayor Buckley. Mayor Buckley advised there is a meeting, 10/26/12, at St. Francis. After that, they will be going to Mitchell Walk in Indiana for a meeting with the Franciscan Alliance. And we will know more after that. Stephanie asked if it was regarding the sale of the hospital and whom Mayor Buckley advised it was regarding the sale, but at this time, the buyer isn't able to disclose due to the confidentiality agreements. Suzie McMillan asked if any of the RDC attended the meetings. Stephanie stated that none of us had been invited to participate. Current commissioners know absolutely nothing about what's going on with St. Francis. We're caught up. So, even though we do have legal control over it and everything, we are caught up, and we know absolutely nothing. From our, the April meeting, when we had Heather James come, it was also discussed that straight from the beginning, it's best to get your legal counsel and your financial person involved from the beginning, so you can make out the best deals. None of them know anything. So, and then to follow up on December 19th meeting, after they two had gone there, this is what they stated from the minutes, December 19th, 2012. Stephanie stated that she and Don met with the mayor and Joe Wolfly. She stated that he made the same statements to them that appeared in the paper. St. Francis seems to have a different take. Let's talk about Main Street now. Main Street, from the April 19th minutes of 2012. We were still under the impression, or that group was still under the impression, that they had control of Main Street. Trent Newport showed up to the meeting, passed out stuff to, to the council, to the commissioners to look at. And then they talked about it on the April 19th, 2012 minutes, you know? Getting to look at that also, some of the stuff, you kind of wonder. Defense to Napoli was paid for by our citizens. Was the extra concrete paid for us by citizens? You look at the Main Street progress meetings, right there listed, you have 2, 3, 5, 8, 15, 20, and 21. And Mayor, President Protam, you guys were listed as always getting the minutes. Please fill in the blanks. And also, to point out towards Main Street, October 18th, 2012. Stephanie mentioned that the RDC has agreed to pay, agreed to pay up to $111,000 for paving of the alleys. Stephanie asked for a motion to approve the payment, not to exceed $111,000. If the bill comes due before our next meeting, we might have a special meeting, but we were authorized then, at that time, to go ahead and pay the bill if necessary. Let's talk about the Rockpile and the RDC group. Per the mayor and the president at that time, the, our NRP will invest about $11 million for us. And from the March 26, 2013 meetings, the Rockpile, Stephanie announced that the NRP group did not receive their funding for the project. They were 1.5 point short of getting what they needed. Joe asked if there was no money for the project, or if federal grant program does, only does so many projects. Mayor Buckley and Stephanie stated that it had to be due with the points, and they would get various points for various items. So, it's just a matter of getting so many points, and then they would get the tax credit. I went on the website, picked it out, and looked at it. They scored 156 points. There's a place in Fort Wayne, Indiana, 158 points. Huntington, Indiana, 159.25. Indianapolis, Indiana, 160.5. Greensburg, Indiana, 167.25. All rejected. So, you know, that 1.5 is, is kind of wondering. I also had been getting several questions about the Greenway. People are wanting that Greenway, and they were wondering where, where the money went and all that other stuff. We were told that the Greenway is dead. And I got looking around. The place that you find the information for this, since I've been around a while, is at the IRTIC or the MPO. So, I went to the MPO, started looking at some minutes. What are these groups? Let me read from something here that can explain it much better than I can. "The Indianapolis Metropolitan Organization, MPO, is designed as the body, local body, to take charge of comprehensive transportation planning process in urbanized and central Indiana. All transportation modalities are included: streets, roads, highways, sidewalks, bridges, railroad, bike, and trails. The MPO is made up of 40-plus different planning partners, participants, and include representatives from eight counties, 30-plus cities and towns, along with 10-plus U.S. or Indiana department and administrators. The MPO plans and recommendations are developed in cooperation with the Indianapolis Regional Transportation Council, which is made up of two bodies. One is a policy, and the other one is a technical. The MPO does an annual work together. They meet on a quarterly basis." Beech Grove has two representatives.
Is this really necessary? I mean, we've got a heavy schedule tonight.
I'm almost done. Beech Grove has a heavy schedule. And I got looking at it. This, the one that I was reading, what the MPO was off of, is off the website called Southport Matters. And from the beginning of this, just got back from the IRTC-MPO meeting of June 6, 2012, Rob Thorman, the ex-mayor from Southport. So, I went to the June 6, 2012 meeting. Rob Thorman, representing Beech Grove. I got there, started looking. I couldn't find anywhere our mayor showed up to. February 22nd, Rob Thorman, representing Southport. I got looking around a little farther. Cash Horner provided an overview of the entire proposed third-quarter amendments. She explained that two amendments were removed from transportation for Beech Grove. Now, Mayor, you can verify for me if this is true or not. Somebody sent me an email. It has three threads on there. And it says, "As much as I don't want to do this, I have to tell you, the city cannot proceed with the Greenway project due to the lack of funding. I believe in all fairness that the grant should be released and given back to its original people, so they can go ahead and cut it loose." October 10, 2012. Because of the $2,390,990 that was released by Beech Grove, it went back to Cumberland's Creek, Cumberland Buck Creek Trail for 1.1 million, Westfield's Monon Trail, Phase 6, 764,000, Indianapolis, Georgia Street for 68,000, Cicero, the Jackson pedestrian sidewalk. You know, we have been accused of costing the city money, although nobody has produced how much money that the RDC is costing the city. It's all been open and just accusations. Nobody's brought together how much money has been brought to board and how much money we have lost. And a lot of it comes because of the circuit breaker. The circuit breaker last year was 2.1. This year, it's 2.3, you know? And included in your $1.9 million bond was live feed on TV, to which we still don't have. So, you know, there's a lot of stuff that the RDC is accused of that's out of our hands. We had nothing to do with any of these. As a matter of fact, you know, the Greenway was taken away from us, all these projects, even though we have legal control. We have no control over them because we have nothing. We have been excluded from the entire process, even though we legally had control over it through the whole process. So, the RDC is facing a lot of facts. You know, I've been accused of being a dictator. Well, let's, let's, let's figure this one out. It takes three votes. You know, it takes three votes. I have pushed to get as much information out on the website as possible. I have pushed for groups to come and explain what's going on. I just had the open door law policy. Mayor, I asked you at that executive meeting to please show up, and you said you had no intentions of showing up to the open door meeting. I am trying to get this stuff out to the public. Also, you know, we also had the Heather James show up and talk about what an RDC is, just to try to further lower people's expectations and what it can and can't do. I'm trying to be as open as possible. A lot of these things have been taken away from the RDC through no fall of our own. Dave, can you produce any facts that we are losing money? You of all people should know of accusations, false accusations or any accusations without solid backup. So, please produce them.
All I have to do is the information that Dan told me.
Okay, thank you.
And that's like Digital City? You say you were looking into that?
We're gathering information.
But what's that got to do with the RDC?
We have power over it. And it's costing the city $350 a month.
That Dan pays. And he says the RDC doesn't have any control over it.
There's still equipment that isn't put up. The way-
I've got some utility poles in the city that belong to the RDC, but that's all you have.
Are you sure of that?
That's what I was informed of.
And that, so, you know, that's what we're looking into, see what options are. We don't know. That's what we're looking to get the exact facts are. We want to see exactly where we stand on each one of the projects that we still have. It's an information-gathered meeting. We don't know what's what. That's what we're trying to do, is gather some information. Once we get that information gathered, that's when we'll come together as a group and make decisions. Until then, everything is still rumored. And that's what we're trying to do. Get past all the rumors. We're up here collecting facts. We're not working off opinions or anything else. We're collecting facts. And that's what we're doing. We broke up, gather this information, and see exactly what we can and cannot do, where we can and cannot go. So, the RDC's getting accused of a lot of things that are basically out of our control. So, you know, we're taking a lot of heat for stuff that is not clearly in our hands, at least from the facts I've found. So, if there's anything different, please help us out, you know, because we need the facts.
I think the only way we can help you out. The city of council pointed you to the RDC, and I think we should take that appointment away. And I want to make this an official motion to do that. Can't do it right now.
I will take it under advisement at the next meeting.
Aye.
You know, that's your privilege. I work for the pleasure of the council. So, if the council at any time feels that I am not fulfilling my duties in any sort of way, that's your, that's your, that's your prerogative, you know? I'm hired by the council, but I work for the citizens of Beech Grove, you know? Let's come together and act as one. Get a partnership together and act as one. That's what the RDC can do, because we need one voice, we need one vision, we need one way for every group in this place to gather back behind and not be fractionalized up. And that's what the RDC can do. That's what the RDC should do. Gather together and have one, one idea, one place to where all the public gets together behind, and they all work towards that one clearly defined goal. That's the power of the RDC, to gather them around and get that one clear agenda that's put out by the public. That's what they can do, and that's what they should do, you know? This kind of reminds me of, I'll just leave it at that. I'll go home. Any questions?
Yeah, a comment, Joe. When did the Greenway projects start? '03?
Something like that.
They started dealing with it. All right. What's the city's match? Do you know?
Well, the city's match, it depends on which phase you're talking about.
Total.
Total? Total match was about 1.5 million, something like that?
No. The city was required to pay for 51.5% of, of the project. The project was $2.1 million. The city's match was $1,017,000, or $57,000.
About 1.5?
In 2012, in March was the drop-dead date. We could not continue to do it anymore, continue the, the process. Extend the grant. It's either going to be yes or no. In February, the city almost failed. In June of last year, the city almost failed financially. There is no way that I was going to allow money to be spent on a Greenway project when the city was in failure.
Even though it was under RDC control?
You didn't have the money. And you don't have the money today. You just sat there and told me that Main Street's under RDC control. Should I send you a bill for $412,000?
Well, I don't know.
That's the city's last portion.
I don't know. How, how did it go from, you know, the question is, how did it go from RDC control to mayor control? The question I got is, is we should work in a partnership-
No, you're done talking. It's my turn.
Okay.
St. Francis, there's nobody going to talk about St. Francis. I meet with them again tomorrow. I've signed a confidentiality agreement. We are under discussions, and when those discussions will come out, we'll be St. Francis. Until then, nobody's talking about it, and I'm not saying a word to anybody. They don't want to deal with the RDC right now. They want to deal with the mayor. And that's the end of the story. All right, you're done.
All right.
No ABC report tonight.
What about dictatorship?
Huh?
To talk about dictatorship.
I control the meeting. I'm the mayor. You're not the mayor. He's not the mayor. The mayor's right here. I'll control the meeting, and that's the end of the story.
Exactly what a dictator is.
ABC, there's no financial report, or ABC report from Jim Brooks this evening. Financial report, we'll go to the clerk.
Dear councilors, our State Board of Accounts audit continues, and we are preparing for our federal audit for next year. We have completed approximately 30 pages of questions. We completed the TIF management portion of the Gateway. Jeff Peters' office gave some assistance, and Joe Griffin and I visited with the county auditor, treasurer's office, and the controller's office, and all provided information for the Gateway. At the request of the county treasurer and auditor, we provided them with the list of the city's debt. I have also updated the debt management portion of the Gateway, which includes the lease purchase information on the new police and fire vehicles that the city recently purchased. I have been in meetings with Mayor Buckley and department heads in preparation of the budget, and I am completing preliminary information on the Gateway. In the month of July, we paid $51,050 on the 2002 Go bond, which painted in foam. We made our first payment of $73,765.21 on the 2012 Go bond. We also made payments on the RDC 2005 TIF bonds in the amount of $139,801, and the 2007 TIF bond in the amount of $144,354.25. The city's website continues to be a huge success and has provided at no charge to the taxpayers. We have wonderful volunteers that assist with updating and posting, and a local business pays the nominal fee that is charged. On July 3rd, we had over 3,000-page hits, which was a record, and we attributed that to the fireworks. We are glad to see so many citizens using it for a source of information. Please, if you have any community events that you would like posted, email those to myself at dan.mcmillan@beechgrove.com. Financial reports, city debt schedules, bank statements, or more are available online at www.beechgrove.com. I also have a transfer request tonight. We received a refund check from Walker Insurance Agency earlier in the year for over $17,000. Unfortunately, that could not be receded into the appropriation number it came out of. It had to be receded into the general fund miscellaneous. Getting to the point, we have an installment due on our insurance of $48,000, but only $39,797 available to use. I am requesting permission to transfer the money to make the payment. All of our bank account information is online and was given to the councilors this evening, and that's all I've got at the present time. If you have any questions, and then I would like to go into this transfer.
We'll do it under new business.
Okay.
Any other questions for the clerk?
Thank you, Dan.
Move to unfinished business. General Ordinance Number 12, 2013, is up for third and final reading. Defer to the clerk to read it in its entirety.
Okay. General Ordinance Number 12, 2013, is an ordinance that amends Chapter 77 of the City of Beech Grove Code of Ordinances concerning traffic patterns on North Eighth Avenue. Whereas, a citizen who resides on North Eighth Avenue has approached the city with a concern about the traffic pattern- a concern about the traffic pattern at North 8th Avenue in Cleveland. And whereas currently, traffic on North 8th Avenue does not stop at Cleveland. And whereas parking is allowed on both sides of 8th Avenue, causing blocked views of the intersection. And whereas citizens who reside in that area desire to have traffic stop in all four directions at North 8th Avenue in Cleveland. Therefore, be it ordained that the common counsel of the City of Beech Grove desires input from the police chief and may act upon his recommendation. Therefore, be it further ordained that the common counsel of the City of Beech Grove desires that Chapter 77, Schedule 2, Subsection A be changed to the following. Schedule 2, Subsection A, change from two-way stop eastbound and westbound Cleveland to four-way stop eastbound and westbound Cleveland, and southbound and northbound 8th Avenue. Therefore, be it ordained that the common counsel instructs the Board of Public Works and Safety to erect signs as such. Therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance shall only apply to the following intersection. Therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect 60 days after passage by the common counsel, signed by the council president and tested by the clerk treasurer and signed by the mayor.
Thank you, clerk. General ordinance number 12, 2013 is up for third reading. Ask for a motion to approve as presented.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. General ordinance number 13, 2013 is up for third and final reading this evening. Now, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance in its entirety. This is an ordinance that was amended on second reading.
General ordinance number 13, 2013 is an ordinance that amends the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 72, Subsection 72.23, pursuant to the overnight parking of commercial motor vehicles. Whereas, residents may drive commercial motor vehicles home from work, and some citizens may be called for a period of time, including overnight. And whereas residents sometimes have deliveries made to their home requiring parking in front of the residences. And whereas service calls sometimes happen to where a commercial motor vehicle may be parked in the street for an extended period of time. And whereas emergencies may happen where a commercial motor vehicle may park on a street for an extended period of time. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the common counsel that parking of large motor vehicles or commercial motor vehicles within the City of Beech Grove be regulated. Now, therefore, be it further ordained that Chapter 72, Subsection 72.23 be amended as such. Delete Chapter 72, Subsection 72.23 in its entirety and replace with the following. Subsection 72.23, no semi-tracker or trailer shall park on a city street between the hours of 12:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. No more than one commercial vehicle, the same company per household, shall park on a city street between the hours of 12:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. Exceptions. One, vehicle operator is allowed to drive a company vehicle home. Two, operator of a vehicle is on call for his or her employer. Three, necessary for the preservation of life and property. Four, except for vehicles, city-sponsored events. Definitions. IC-9-13-2-31, commercial motor vehicle. Section 31A, commercial motor vehicle means, except as provided in Subsection B, a motor vehicle or a combination of motor vehicles used in commerce to transport passengers or property of the motor vehicle. One, has a gross combination weight rating of at least 26,001 pounds, including a towed unit with a gross vehicle rating more than 10,000 pounds. Number two, has a gross vehicle weighting rating of at least 26,001 pounds. Number three, is designed to transport 16 or more passengers, including the driver. Or, four, is A, of any size. B, using the transportation of materials found to be hazardous for the purpose of the Hazardous Materials Transportation Act. And C, required to be placarded under the Hazardous Material Regulations, 49 CFR Part 1, 72, Subpart F. D, to include vehicles with a gross declared weight greater than 11,000 pounds but less than 26,001 pounds. Now, therefore, be it ordained that the common counsel desires to amend Chapter 72 of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Beech Grove. Now, therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance only applies to commercial motor vehicles. Now, therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect 60 days after passage by the common counsel, signed by the council president and tested by the clerk treasurer and signed by the mayor.
General ordinance number 13, 2013 is up for third and final reading. Ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
The ordinance we, the city sponsor, amends. Do we fall under that?
Yeah, as long as the board approves it. General ordinance number 14, 2013 is up for second reading only this evening. General ordinance number 14, 2013 is an ordinance that amends Chapter 72 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove pursuant to soliciting around roadways or approach motor vehicles. Whereas vehicles sometimes are required to stop due to traffic signals or other causes such as traffic congestion. And whereas, people who are driving and/or riding in vehicles should not have to be bothered by people walking up to their vehicle. And whereas, people take the risk of being struck by a moving vehicle while approaching such vehicles from the side of the roadway. And whereas, impeding the flow of normal traffic could lead to a traffic accident. Therefore, be it ordained that the common counsel desires to amend Chapter 72 of the Code of Ordinances that would prohibit this type of activity. Therefore, be it further ordained that the common counsel desires the following amendments be added to Chapter 72. Number one, Section 73.12, prohibited activity around roadways shall be unlawful for a pedestrian to sit, stand, or move within or upon a roadway or a median between two roadways, or within the public right-of-way not exceeding 50 feet from the traveled portion of any intersection controlled by an automatic traffic signal or stop sign for the purpose of or while engaged in by oral written methods, A, soliciting or peddling, selling, advertising, donating, or distributing product, property, or service, including but not limited to tickets, handbills, newspapers, or other printed materials to or from an occupant of a vehicle in the roadway; or B, conversation or discourse with an occupant of a vehicle in the roadway. Section, or number two, Section 73.13, interference with vehicular traffic shall be unlawful for a person by oral written methods to solicit or to peddle, sell, advertise, donate, or distribute any product or service, including but not limited to tickets, handbills, newspapers, or other printed materials to an occupant of a vehicle or to engage in conversation or discourse with an occupant of a vehicle within or upon a roadway or a median between two roadways, or within the public right-of-way not exceeding 50 feet from the traveled portion of any intersection controlled by an automatic traffic signal or stop sign so as to A, endanger the safety or welfare of an occupant of a vehicle within or upon a roadway or a pedestrian or within the immediate vicinity. B and P the free flow of vehicular traffic on the roadway. Or C, obstruct or distract the view of the driver of such vehicle within or upon a roadway. Therefore, be it ordained that the common counsel desires to amend Chapter 72 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove. Therefore, be it further ordained that this applies only to Chapter 72 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove. Therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect 60 days after passage by the common counsel, signed by the council president, tested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor. General ordinance number 14, 2013 is up for second reading. Ask for a motion to approve as presented.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
This will be up for third and final reading at the September 3rd meeting. That concludes old business. We'll go to new business. Local 416 requests fire department. Aaron Genati, please.
Good evening.
Good evening, Aaron.
Well, you should have a letter in your packet that I wrote and hand-delivered to the mayor. I'm just going to read it out loud so everybody else is aware of what we're asking for. The city council and Mayor Buckley, the Beech Grove Professional Firefighters Association request a vote on August 5th, 2013, to replace the three civilian paramedics that were laid off four years ago by the then-mayor Joe Wright. Listed below are the reasons why we are requesting the action to be taken at this time. The city council agreed to revisit the item during 2013 budget talks after receiving the final circuit breaker numbers. And we were just kind of talking about that. Fall festival's coming back up, and that's when we were discussing it last year, about the same time. That was part of the agreement when we came to the council and said, this is where we're at. We met with Peters. We're going to hold off and wait until we have circuit breaker numbers. Exactly why we're here. We know what the circuit breaker numbers are. Since 2009, ambulance revenue has been steadily increasing from the city. Matter of fact, in 2011, we only budgeted $432,000. In 2012, we only budgeted $479,959.80 is what we budgeted. This year, they budgeted $675,000. As of seven months into the year, we're already at $479.13, which puts us at an average of $68,444 per month that we're getting, $68,444 per month that we are getting in ambulance revenue on average, which will put us at $800,021,328 by the end of the year, which is all well above what we budgeted last year, what we got in last year, on top of well above what we budgeted for this year in the budget. And that's why, the main reasons I'm here. We will be extremely excited to exceed this number of cost over three additional civilian paramedics. If the city agrees to rehire three civilian paramedics, it will improve staffing, lessen the overtime, and increase the overall service for the citizens of Beech Grove. If the city would approve the money for hiring three civilian paramedics, it would only cost the city a total cost of $19,000 for salaries and benefits in 2013, because there's only three pay periods they will only, even, three pay periods they will only hit in 2013, and $150,756 in 2014 for salaries. And then we tried to figure out the benefits and up in it. But if we do the 150, 756 is about where we think it would lie based off of some of the information we have. Having your own employee staff medic 102 located at 1202 Albany Street will allow for the best patient care and outcome. And where that really comes from is the fact that that will be the easiest way to pull the firefighter off the ambulance, put him on the fire truck, and start staffing our fire trucks the way they need to be, and staffing our medic truck with a proper staffing so that all entities are being staffed correctly, and that we're allowing for the fire trucks to start being staffed. So, we're meeting certain standards that we try to meet as our governing body for us. On August 5th, 2013, we request that the city council and Mayor Buckley vote yes to appropriate the funds to rehire the three civilian paramedics starting November 10th. And some people have asked me why November 10th. Well, we don't just say, hey, if you're a paramedic, you want to be, work for us? It doesn't work that way. We will, we advertise. As part of our accreditation, we have to advertise. And then we bring them in, and we make them do a written exam. Then we have them do a psychomotor exam. And then we do an interview process. And then at that point, that's how we really narrow it down to try and find good, quality people to come work for the City of Beech Grove. Do you have any questions? Yes. Knock yourself out.
I don't mean to be disrespectful, but I really am confused a lot about this issue. Just because way back when, this was a great idea and everybody wanted it, and we did it.
We did.
It was a bad idea, and we got rid of them, and-
Well, no, it was never a bad idea.
I know, but I'm just, I'm just speaking out.
The reason it became a bad idea is because we were informed at the time of the clerk treasurer and the mayor Joe Wright, that the city had no money, and the only way he could eliminate where the city would suffice is to eliminate six civilian paramedics, and is exactly what he chose to do. There was never a bad idea. This is never a bad thing working. It was literally working well, and it was eliminated by that mayor.
Okay.
Because of money. Well, he claimed money, and then Chris Duffer came in, and at the end of that year, actually said, no, we have money.
But continuing my scenario here.
Okay.
Then we've got all these firefighters who are paramedics.
Yes.
So, then they're riding the ambulance. Are you telling me, Ben, by doing that, we don't have enough firefighters on the fire trucks?
No. What I'm, what I'm saying is, we had six civilian paramedics, and we had two firefighters at that time. Since then, Mayor Buckley retired, Joe Wright chose not to replace him. And then another gentleman left City of Beech Grove and went to Monticello, and we chose not to replace him. And then they laid off six civilian paramedics. Terry Dilk, and I think Jennings was involved in a little bit of that conversation, worked the numbers, and came up with that we don't have the money now. We'll only hire three civilian paramedics back to help with staffing, because staffing is a problem. So, they went through all that. They hired three civilian paramedics back. And then it was in our budget last year to hire the three additional, and this Board of Works actually approved the hiring if Dan would approve that the money was there. Never happened. And it was still in the budget, and then we worked around, and we were afraid that we weren't going to beat it. We were afraid the circuit breaker was going to be $400,000 to $500,000. We were afraid of a lot of things. Now, we know what the circuit breaker was this year. We know where the revenue is, because that was a concern. We know where those things are, and we're showing projections. I mean, we're working hard. We're making a lot of runs. The ESO software has really helped us to make sure that we're collecting signatures, and so we're getting payments quicker through their insurance companies, and we're getting reimbursements very well. The way, you know, we like to take this money that's going into the general fund as extra, and start plugging it a little bit back in to kind of get our staffing back up to where it was five years ago.
Now, bear with me, because I'm not making any decision. I really don't think that I can vote yes or no either way.
Okay.
I just, I'm just trying to get information out. And I don't know how the others feel.
I don't, I don't know either.
We have an arrangement right now for a second ambulance to be on from St. Francis.
Mm-hmm.
Is it at all possible? Have there been discussions to expand that coverage? Can they, will they, are they able to?
The problem that we're running into with that, we rely on medic 102 to be in service 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. That is our primary medic truck, right? When you have a company staffing your medic truck with the second person, they're typically part-time individuals that I won't say they don't care, but if something else comes up, or they have a problem, they just, I'm not going to be able to make it today. We have nobody backfilling, we have nobody staffing, then that truck's left open. And then that would either cause us, depending on what the staffing is on the engines or where we're at, either shut down something, or- 或者把它覆盖掉。
关闭， 一个引擎？
一个引擎， 医生， 它取决于 staff 的情况。所以， 我们可以控制它更好， 是让我们自己有工作人员， 而且没有那么大的节省， 第三年， 它稍微有点分开， 但第一两年， 它没有那么大的变化。其实 chief Cheshire 可以说一点关于这个。
不管， 我就像你说的， 我不知道我可以支持 yes 或 no 今晚。
你的担忧是什么？
好， 我， 我的担忧首先是安全， 我需要覆盖。
好。
所以。
所以你说救护车不引进？
我不知道， 这不是我们需要做的。
我意思是， 我们预算了两千五百美元以上， 我们去年预算的， 然后加上这个， 我们再引进一个 additional 一百四十，六千， 三，二十八， 我们预计会引进在七个月内。所以那是三千， 四十六， 或， 对， 三千，四十六， 三，二十八， 这些是今年基于运行量， 增加的费用， 和 ESO 软件收集正确的 payment stuff。我们在做我们的部分， 我们在做我们的工作。
而且我不认为， 我不知道我有权说这个， 但是你正在为城市创造 revenue。
嗯。
你会感谢， 因为不是， 很多部门都不。
我觉得只有三个。
好。但是， 这个城市需要 revenue。
我不想反对。
所以也许你的 revenue 可以被更好的使用。你明白我的意思吗？
不，我没有， 因为我觉得， 我觉得安全和雇用我们的车辆 appropriately， 这是做更好的方法， 是我向你提出的。
好。我只是想确保我们没有做出冲动性的决定。就是看起来我们总是做出冲动。带上，带上， 清除， 放弃， 让他们， 让他们， 而且我不想成为那个。
我同意。我不想成为那个人。但是， 我意思是， 技术上， 我们是消防部门， 我觉得我们知道我们应该做什么。我做了研究， 你们所有人都参加了研究。我意思是， 我已经告诉你我们在做什么， 我正在尽可能教育你们， 解释我们需要某些东西， 以及我们不是在你的耳朵上吹烟雾， 但是， 我意思是， 那个研究， 如果你们花了时间去研究， 它讨论了四个人员和发动机。通过雇佣 civilian paramedic， 我们把消防员从 medic truck 出发， 而且我们把他们放在我们需要的地方。
我知道。我在你的书里。
什么？
我在你的书里。我， 我只是， 我只是， 我不是， 这是唯一一次我跟人们聊天， 或举行会议， 因为你可以， 因为， 你知道， 有规则， 你不能在房间里和特定的人一起聊天， 你不能开门， 任何。
嗯。
我理解所有这些， 所以， 有时候我会愚蠢地问， 你问我问题。
对。
我希望每个人都， 你知道， 听到我们可能的选择。
他们正在建造。
我相信， 说实话， 如果我们能做这个， 比碧城能承受， 那就很好， 但我不知道答案。
好， 如果你看看 revenue， 它没有预测， 只是 revenue 它没有预测， 是 146,328。这比今年这个更覆盖， 加上给城市 additional revenue， 加上他们没有预测， 然后明年那会儿， 那会帮助资助。
我知道， 你明白我在说什么吗？
说哪？
好， 我不能说， 我从头开始， 但我只是说， 市市需要钱。
我不是在争论， 市， 我意思是， 警察需要东西， 我意思是， 大家需要一点钱。
对。
我们正在做的是，
我知道。
尝试增加更多的资金， 尝试帮助双方， 我们正在把这部分的钱用于 general fund， 回来帮助我们， 五年之前， 随着情况。
我只能说， 现在， 我不准备。
好。
我仍然有疑问， 你和我在一起聊天， 我知道你很擅长回答问题， 你， 你很负责， chief， 如果你有什么可以。
当然。
你。
只要片刻休息。首先， 公司救护车服务， 比碧城消防部门提供， 是给社区服务的。当我们对待病人时， 火力部门的运营效率， 当我们谈论我们的公司服务， 消防员的安全和人员调度是优先 priority。我们想保护自己的员工安全。如果他们不能安全， 他们就不能帮你， 在城市和社区。当我们去年和 Dan 和 Dennis 合作的时候， 我们还和 Jeff Peters 合作了， 我们在预算中， 我们也看了可能的 circuit breaker 出现， 昨年， 而不是雇佣我们的三个 civilian， 在签订这个协议中， 除了服务， 一个是 revenue 增加。两倍， 我们增加了我们出城的救护车费用， 这帮助增加 revenue， 也是通过提供一辆救护车， 而且 unfortunately， 在那段时间， 在那五十次跑中， 这是这个年的 revenue。那辆救护车的第二辆车， 在一个月内做一百次跑。如我之前所说， 这会引发灾难， 增加燃料成本， 增加供应和维修。那些是我们的预算中的 minor 增加， 比较整体 revenue 这辆车带来的。关于安全， 我们谈了安全， 你的问题回到 AJ， 如果钱能被 elsewhere 服务， 我要求你 reinvest 回到消防部门。对于我们提供的额外 revenue， 我们只是要求 reinvest 到我们提供的服务， 对碧城的市民。而且我们想提供这项服务， 提供可能最好的服务。有三个 civilian paramedic 在那辆救护车上， 他们非常忙碌。在这两个救护车上， 我们已经做了超过两千， 两千五百次跑， 在七月的最后。这个数字是非常高的， 对我们这么大城市来说。我们的发动机非常忙碌， engine 102 已经做了超过一千， engine 101， 超过七百五。有了这些， 在任何 EMS 跑动中， 你有两个人在救护车。如果我们有四个发动机， 如果是一个严重的医疗患者， 在火灾中， 所以我们要求这些钱 reinvest 回到消防部门， 回到人员， 我们想继续维护两台 ALS 发动机， 如果两个救护车都不存在， 至少我们提供的服务， 是一个 paramedic 配备的发动机， 直到运输单位到达， 这很重要。我们想有我们的人员， 医生 102， 有专门的团队， 圣弗兰西斯的项目很棒， 我经常看这两个车辆是 separate entities。一个是， 我们在跑， 提供服务， 另一个是， 队员， 提供好的病人护理， 对人们和社区。如果你还有其他问题， 我很高兴尝试回答。
好， 我， 我不知道， 我， 我希望救护车， 我希望每个人都被覆盖。我希望你们都安全， whether it's a fire run， 或者救护车， 或 EMS， 我的意思是， 如果是警察， 那， 那不是我的考虑。但是， 我也需要， 我需要其他的， 就是 expensive 的方面， 因为， 我意思是， 你可以有 Cadillacs， 账单很贵， 但你可以有一个， 我不知道， 一个便宜的东西， 可以为更低的成本做同样的事情， 而且， 我不想过度使用。所以我正在挣扎。所以， 再次， 我现在回答的是， 我不能支持 yes 或 no 今晚。帮我一下。
我觉得我们表这个， 以便我们可以收集更多信息。
我觉得这很棒。
我可以发表这个建议？
是。
表示。拟表。
等一下， 我有个问题， 首先， 如果这个表是， 我在 presenting the budget， 它不会在 2014年 budget 上， 所以我想大家理解这一点。
你刚才问， 关于， 费用是 minor， 我注意到， 在救护车上， 你刚才说的新， 已经跑了三十万公里， eventually， 它会有一个 warranty， 然后替换， 我们在关注节省钱， 对那些产品？
绝对， 这是我们必须考虑的， 在 budget 的 matrix 里， 我们 purchased 的 V10 发动机， 它有 50,000 英里 warranty， do have 50,000-mile warranty on it. Medic 102 does have 34,600 miles on it as of date, and it'll be in service for one year in September. With the amount of revenue that's coming into the city, there is still money to provide for personnel and to set money aside for leases in the future and for ambulance replacement.
I'd like to comment on that, because also, we've heard about tonight is revenue. We haven't heard a bit about expenses. And first off, I'd like to say, Aaron, there's people in this city that want streets. There's plenty of places for that money to go sidewalks. I'll just tell you, in the 20 months I've been in office, I haven't had one person come up and say, "We need another paramedic," or someone drive the ambulance. I've had hundreds come up to me, "We need streets. We need sidewalks. We need sewer projects." Anyway, I just did a quick overview. I know I missed a lot of things, but just expense-wise, out of so far revenue year-to-date, you're at $476,980. I've got expenses of $144,950, $183,183, so that's about $328,000. You spoke about overtime. Out of $80,000 you guys have spent year-to-date on overtime, the ambulance portion of it is only $3,400. And...
Well, that's, that's a, that's a clue, because when they backfill, they don't backfill the ambulance, because there's only three people that technically are, only can work the ambulance. They backfill the engine then next, because it's a firefighter's position, because there's only three people in the department.
Well, anyway, out of this $328,000, I don't know what your life expectancy is on the ambulance, whether it's two years or three years. I'll give you the benefit of the doubt, three years. That ambulance was $155,000, so you take that $328,000 and add another $50,000 on it, you know, and then there's other things. Med bill. There's a lot of things in here that's not a budgeted item for the fire department. What it amounts to, the revenue looks great, but you put the expenses next to it. I don't want to end up like Lawrence. I don't want to end up like Detroit. And that's what's going to happen if we're not fiscally responsible. You heard the mayor say tonight, we almost went belly-up in 2012. Well, just because we take in some revenue, we don't need to spend every penny we take in. We've given, we've gotten you guys a new fire truck, two new ambulances, four new staff vehicles. It's not there. I'm sorry. And I hope the council listens to that, because it's just like, you know, do you want the police department to go out and write a bunch of tickets so they can generate more revenue to, you know, to get them something else? I mean, we've tried to work with you to get you good equipment. We fixed every one of the buildings you guys are in. We've done things, but you guys just keep pushing it and pushing it and pushing it, and the money is not there. I've told you in department head meetings, I've told you when I met with you guys in the union meetings, that this budget would almost mirror last year's budget.
I've not had a union meeting this year with you about budgets.
Rob, have I discussed that with you?
Yes, you have, Dan. And my point again is, when it comes to public safety of the community, I was placed in this position to overview and take a look at what is needed by this fire department to provide public safety. Now, I'm giving you a complete overview of what is needed. When that ambulance is marked out of service, or that engine is marked out of service, and it's not there to respond, I'm going to come back to this council and let you know that this, you guys bear the brunt of public safety and the service of the community. So, we are not asking for anything astronomical. We are just asking for the tools, equipment, and manpower to do the job safely and provide this service to this community. Thank you.
Can you answer one question for me?
Absolutely.
How many of these ambulance runs are in Beach Grove? You know, we're going out and running in Indianapolis, which is a million and a half citizens.
Dan, I'll be glad to research that answer for you and try to get you down to the exact number. But now, you're looking at me, and you're coming back and telling me, well, you like the revenue that's coming in, and don't put up boundaries on the city, in-city, out-of-city, if you do want this ambulance to continue to make runs and generate revenue for the city. That's why we increased our out-of-city runs, because if it puts a burden on our service where our ambulance is out of city, that's why we're charging a higher fees for the maintenance, for the fuel, for the personnel. It's part of providing the service.
I just want to know, once enough? I mean, Dan just said we give you a new fire truck. We give you two new ambulance, repaired all your buildings. I mean, when is enough going to be enough?
It is very much appreciative that we do have the equipment, and that is the tools and the equipment that's needed to keep the firefighter safe and the community safe.
Well, I would vote no on this tonight. 100% no.
So, we're five people short. We're just trying to bring back, not ask for anything extra. We never have.
No, you're not five people short. You're just asking for three.
We are two, we're asking for three. We're two firefighters still short. And if you don't believe me, you can ask Mayor Buckley when he was fired. That's where we were standing. Mayor Joe Wright laid them all off.
Aaron, when you, Aaron, when you guys were in contact with Indianapolis about going into Indianapolis and merging with them, we would have one fire station in Beach Grove, not two.
I don't know what you're, I've never been involved in those discussions.
Okay.
The only discussion we've been involved in, it was immediately canceled, and it was no good, because Mayor Joe Wright said, "We're fine."
Okay.
Council president, do you want to add a comment?
Well, I would like to, you know, table it right now.
I know where things go that are get tabled.
And look, I'm sorry.
I know where things go that get tabled.
Well, we're going to have to, we've got to get more info. I mean, I'm concerned about the expenses, okay? When you, when Dan's talking about that delicate balance there, there's not that much money to, when you're talking about hiring three more people, and if we have to, unfortunate to take them back away, that's not, that's not right. I want stability.
Did you recommend table?
I motioned table.
Okay, there's a, there is a motion to table. I need a second.
And I would second.
I think the time, John. I mean, it can't happen this year with me putting the budget, so I want them to understand that it won't be in the 2014 budget and you're table.
Six months, we go half what we did last time?
Check out that.
Next year, yeah. I motion, we, I motioned we tabled this for six months.
I need a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
I have a request. Since you've tabled it for six months, I request that we form a committee to look at this further.
Ed, second.
Six, one. I think that would be a waste of our time.
He's asking, he's asking for a committee for it, but I believe that's out of my realm of jurisdiction, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, we can assign a committee to it. That's no problem. I won't...
I mean, you have a feasibility study that was basically done to tell you. So, I mean, if people aren't, people need more education on it, then we should be getting facts together to educate more, and me saying it isn't working, so obviously, somebody from up here needs to be involved.
I would invite at least two council people to be in that committee. All right.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you, Aaron. And Chief.
Resolution number nine, 2013, is up to be heard this evening. And before we do that, Joe, did you want to comment on it again? Uh, no, I want to hear what you've got to say.
Okay. Do we find this resolution legal? Craig?
What, why isn't it legal?
Um, if you go to, Ed, you were there. Mayor, you were there. Dave, you were there. If you go back to the April meeting, when Heather James pointed out what was going on, let me pass this.
Take one, pass it down.
Here again, this is where the misunderstanding of what makes an RDC. It's on the website also, along with the audio. You go to number 14. It says, "Procedures for establishing or amending an area to implement tax increment financing." So, if you're going to amend this, you're going to have to go through those things that I told you about earlier. And here they are laid right out, you know. We're going to have to say, "RDC adopts a declaratory resolution, plan, and factual report. Plan commission approval. City council approval of planned commission order. Publish notice of public hearing and distribute impact statement. RDC holds public hearings and adopts conformatory resolution. City council approves the creation of an area if one needs to be, and that's only for an economic development. RDC records the resolution, notifies the Department of Local Government and Finance, and files all documentation with the auditor." So, in other words, in order to amend your plan, as it was brought out that night, you have to do the exact same thing to, that you did to make it a plan. And if you remember, there was, what, five or six resolutions? Ed, you were part of it. We have to do the exact same thing to do that. It takes more than just one thing, and that is what was brought out at that meeting. You know, it's part of the misunderstanding of what goes on with RDCs.
Joe, let me, in '06, this came from the comprehensive redevelopment plan for the city in '06.
Correct.
That was approved by the city council.
And it had to go through this process, had to go through the entire process that we just talked about. Had to go back and forth. Remember that, Ed?
It was signed off by the city council.
Yeah, but that was just part of it. City council brought up, what was it, three ordinances? Two ordinances, three ordinances. Three ordinances. The RDC had to bring up three or four ordinances, and then they had that special meeting that was held together.
So, this just came off of the redevelopment plan that was approved by the council in '06.
That is a comprehensive redevelopment plan that is for the RDC and the city. The city went ahead and approved the RDC plan as part of their local planning ordinances. So, in order to come back, especially in a TIF area, in order to come back into a TIF area that's under RDC control, this is what has to happen. You're amending a TIF area and a TIF plan.
I'm amending a plan approved by the council.
And also, it had to go through what the RDC did, too. It was that list of stuff that I showed you. You have...
There wasn't anybody's signature on that. And I got it downstairs that is on the RDC, city council.
It is, it is written right here. I've got the plans, I've got it right here, too, if you want to see those. It takes a group, it takes that whole process to amend a comprehensive redevelopment plan. So, if this goes through, I'm going to have our attorney look at it. This is why we need a different attorney.
Well, you know...
I don't want to do this. Let's, let's, table it for tonight, and if you can do it, more power to you. But let's have the attorney, let's have our attorney have a chance to look at it.
You know, if we, if we table it tonight, I'm not going to bring it back up. You know, I give you 10, 10 million reasons why I'd like to see this approved tonight.
Well, I'd like to do it legally. That's what I want. I want to see it all done legally.
Counsel, you are our legal representation. Is he correct? Is this out of our realm of reach? Are we not allowed to do this? Since it has council signatures on it, is this something that we can, as simply as resolution number nine, can we take care of this?
The answer is yes, and I will say this, Mr. Griffin, I say this with all due respect. From a legal perspective, at current, there is a fundamental misunderstanding of the operation of an RDC in this community.
That's correct, and I'm trying to bring ins to that. Right here are the resolutions that did it. And if you sit there and listen to, we had three representatives there. If you go back, and it's on the website, it's like one hour and three minutes into it. Heather addresses this. In order to make an amendment to the comprehensive redevelopment plan, you have to do the exact same thing that you did in order to make it a plan. And that requires the council and the RDC getting together. Table. That is, that's legal, as it stands right now. Now, they have a study group on this. They have a study group this summer that's looking at it, and there's good chances that there is going to be some sort of changes made by the legislature. What they are, nobody knows, but there's a chance it's going to happen.
Joe, if I ask to have this tabled, can you have this reviewed by next month's meeting?
Yeah.
Excellent. I motion, we table this for one month, one meeting.
And if it's legal, I'd like to have our attorney look at it first.
Is Ms., is Ms. James still your attorney?
Yes. Yeah.
John, you made a motion. I need a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will...
I oppose.
We will table it until the September 3 meeting.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
I will table withdrawal of general ordinance number 15, 16, and 17 until next meeting. We will go to transfer of funds. And clerk, you got it?
Counselors, below is a request for permission to transfer money and appropriations. The transfer is within the same departments and does not increase the budget. This appropriation received a refund earlier in the year for over $17,000, and the money was receipted into the general fund. Even without that, this would not exceed this department's appropriations. So, what I'm asking for is transfer of $17,000 from number 101008-8134.000, Board of Public Works, Unemployment Compensation, to 101008-342.000, Board of Works, Citywide Liability and Workman's Comp Insurance.
You've heard the clerk's request, motion to transfer funds.
Can I have Dan read those numbers again?
Just kidding. I'll make said motion, please.
Second.
I'll second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Go back to general ordinance number 15. I need a motion to table till the next meeting.
15, 16, and 17?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to table general ordinances number 15, number 16, and number 17 until the mayor sees fit to put them back on the agenda.
I'll second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Comments, Dave?
Yeah, I still want to, I made a comment earlier about removing Joe from the RDC. What do we need to do on that?
It's got to be done by a resolution through the council. It's a council appointment. If it was a mayor's appointment, he could ask that person to resign or remove them, but since it's a council appointment, you got to do it by resolution.
Hey, then let's do the resolution.
Do what? You go talk to him after the meeting about that, have it pull up for next month's agenda. Are you concluded?
That's it.
The mayor said Tim Latimer had surgery. I'd like to wish Tim a speedy recovery. That's all I have for this evening.
Dave? I have nothing. Anthony?
I would just like to thank Mr. Scott Seach, who is the owner of Beach Grove. Dan and I were, I believe, privileged enough to hand out awards to the Special Rollers League on Saturday, and it was a real nice thing that Scott had put on. All the kids got pizza, they got the bowl, and they got a nice little medal. So, I would just like to publicly thank him. That's it.
Ed?
I agree. I was there last year. It was a great event. I hope they continue. Thank you for coming tonight. Been a, an evening that, with the public service, we use a lot of money and more money to where we can actually guarantee safety to get more people on the department.
Mary?
I have no comment this evening.
Kathy?
I think it's going to be a hard judge this year. If I'm here, thank you all.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
I'll second.